Good evening. I am going to call the meeting to order. Thank you. Oh, there's no action taken in closed session. Okay, and the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you ready to do protocol?
Yes, I can read our board meeting protocol. I didn't miss anything.
Yes, thank you. So, our meeting is being recorded. It's open to the public and it's being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference for public comment. Comments are three minutes per agenda item and will be timed. The board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make a comment in person, please complete the form at the door and that would go to Ms. Bach, our board meeting assistant. Email public comment would be emailed to the superintendent 24 hours before the board meeting and posted to the website. We have received no written comments for our meeting tonight. Board vote connectivity. Each motion will be followed by a roll call vote for action items. Should we lose connectivity due to teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes. Trustee Raboy is not with us tonight and our regular board meeting shall be adjourned by 10:30 PM.
Okay. So, we have a presentation?
We do. We are starting with a presentation. We have a new principal for McCaffrey Middle School, starting the 25-26 school year, Crystal Grooms. She has served as assistant principal in the Folsom-Curdova School District since 2021 and she has also served as a career technical education coordinator in the Woodland School District for three years and a teacher at Ria Linda Senior High School for eight years. And so, we're very excited about her accepting the position for principal at McCaffrey and she is with us here this evening and she would like to share a few words with the board. Thank you, Crystal, for being here with us tonight.
Thank you and thank you very much for entrusting me with your most precious commodity, your children. I can't wait to get started and build upon the great work that McCaffrey has going. For me, Galt feels like coming home. I grew up in a rich agriculture community, very similar to Galt and while I've served in many roles in the Sacramento region, getting to a community that has this deep roots and just feels like home to me is very, very exciting. So, I can't wait to get started and thank you for putting this trust in me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. So, I will be sending McCaffrey staff some communication by the end of this week that has a letter of introduction that Crystal has provided to let the McCaffrey staff know as well. And next, we have another presentation, another announcement. We have a new assistant principal, Krista Dunkle and she has been teaching in Galt since 2013 and she has served as a teacher on special assignment as well and she's currently teaching at Greer Elementary School and she will serve as an assistant principal in our district, starting the 25-26 school year. Krista, would you like to share a couple of words with the board?
Good evening. Oh, sorry. As Mrs. Yant said, I am Krista Dunkle and I'm truly honored and very excited to accept the role as assistant principal for the next school year. As someone who attended school in this district, beginning in kindergarten, this opportunity feels especially meaningful. This district shaped who I am, as a learner, a leader, and a person and I'm deeply grateful to now serve the community that helped inspire my love of learning. Over the past 14 years, I've had the privilege of working at Greer Elementary in various roles, most recently as a sixth grade teacher and teacher on special assignment. Over the years, I've had the privilege to lead in areas such as science instruction through the NGSS implementation team, mentoring new teachers through the SCOE induction program, and supporting school culture and climate as a lead on our PBAS and SEL initiatives. These experiences have strengthened my belief in the power of relationships, high expectations, and inclusive school communities and I'm thrilled to continue this work in this new capacity. So, thank you for entrusting me with this role and I'm excited to collaborate with students, staff, families, and all of you to help our students thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to public comments for topics not on the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
No, we do not have public comments for topics not on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to reports.
We are going to start with a summer program report.
Thank you, Lois. So, we are in the summer planning timeframe right now and getting our summer programs up and going. We were able to hire our coordinators. So, our extended school year coordinator is Gina Fuentes. A summer school coordinator is Elaine Troll and then continued support throughout the summer will be through our expanded learning coordinator, Lori Jones, and Nick Suavida, who's our food services coordinator. So, in terms of our summer programs, we have extended school year. This is special education, summer school programs. We have our summer academy and these are students that are invited that have demonstrated some academic needs. Typically, we look at students that are falling between the 27th to the 45th percentiles on their MAP scores. So, those students are invited to attend our summer academy. And then additionally, we will be having our migrant summer program, which we offer every summer as part of our continued funding for that program. So, that's offered during the summer as well. And then on top of these academic programs, we will continue our GEL summer offering as well. And so, what I've provided for you in your board packet is kind of the schedule of which programs are happening at which times. We have our academic programs starting June 9th and they will go all the way through July 3rd with no school on the 19th. School will be in session Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 12:00 PM. Our GEL program is all summer long. So, we will start June 13th and go all the way through July 24th and they offer kind of pre, before school, 7:30 all the way to 4:30 PM. And in terms of the sites that we, that will be hosting these programs, we have extended school year will happen at Fairsite with our preschoolers. River Oaks, we will have our autism programs. Lake Canyon will house our, all of our other elementary special education programs. McCaffrey will host our middle school program. Our migrant and summer school programs, this is the academic. Fairsite will have our migrant program. Greer, Lake Canyon, and migrant will be at McCaffrey, although today I got a call that they might move it to Greer, but typically, we've had it at McCaffrey. And in terms of our GEL program, that will be offered at every site, a academic or ESY program is being offered. So, they will be offered at Greer, Lake Canyon, River Oaks, McCaffrey, and Fairsite. And the sites that are not hosting any program, their students, if they are participating in GEL, have the opportunity to be transported to the site that is going to be hosting the program. So, last, this year, this summer, we'll be hosting. Greer will have all of our programs. So, our students from Valley Oaks can be bused to Greer, but most of our families live within the same kind of neighborhood. So, they don't necessarily require it. But if there are families that do request transportation from Valley, then we would transport them to Greer. And so, as I mentioned, we are kind of in the beginning stages of this planning process. We have started to notify teachers that they've been selected for the certificated portions and then postings for classified staff have been pushed out. And so, we're in, you know, kind of in those stages of filling all these positions to support the summer program. It's a pretty robust, busy time with different programs throughout the district. Are there any questions or?
Go ahead. I just, do you guys track sort of the outcomes from the programs or see like if there's been any, you know, improvement over the summer? Is there a way, or is that like more?
We do. We actually have for, for our summer academy. So, these are the academic invited programs. We do have our students take a pre and post test and typically, I share all that information in August. So, we'll look at attendance rates and we'll see kind of what progress our student, students that participated in the academy, what their scores were, like whether there are progress in their pre and post data. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. So, we will move on to a curriculum preference for a survey that we gave our teachers recently. We'll turn it to Cleo.
So, during a prior board meeting, you had requested that we conduct a survey to determine which curricular core subject area teachers preferred that the district prioritized when funds become available to pilot and implement a new program. So, on March 20th, teachers were asked to complete a survey indicating their core program priority as well as their interest in piloting new materials when the time comes. We have responses from 156 teachers and the data indicates that 47% of the respondents would like to see a science adoption. 28 would like to see a history social studies adoption, while 31 indicated, 31% indicated no preference. The survey also showed that 26% would be interested in being part of a future pilot. So, science, it is. When the funds become available, that is what teachers would prefer that we prioritize. Any thoughts, any questions?
Does a similar like curriculum rollout look like, say like the iReady, where the maybe over a course of a year, you're looking at different stuff and thinking about it and talking about it?
It would probably take, it wouldn't take, I don't think, a two, it wouldn't be a two-year process because with Leah's leadership and leaders from the district, I think we're pretty well-versed in the new standards of science. So, we wouldn't have to have a year to either understand the new framework like we did with math and standards. So, it would probably be a one-year process.
What would be the next step? So, now that we have this information and this preference, at what point can we determine that, yes, we can start to move forward or start looking at maybe starting to pursue that option?
I think that's something that Lois or Alejandra can answer.
Yeah. I think the board would have to not vote right now, but make a commitment that you would want us to use the majority of the one-time funding. We're anticipating approximately a million dollars of one-time funding. I think it would cost more than a million dollars for an adoption. The math adoption is costing us two, about 2.1 million. I don't know if science is going to be as much, although there's a lot of material with science labs and things like that. So, it could easily be as much as math. So, we could, the board could say, okay, move forward with a pilot next year and then we reach out to publishers. They give us some sample materials. We reach out to some of the teachers that indicated they would like to pilot and they would start to do that process. They would make a decision on which curriculum they would like and then at that time, we would say, okay, how are we going to fund it? But I, I wouldn't want to say, teachers, okay, go through this pilot process if the board's not committed to allocating almost all of the one-time funds and possibly dipping into general fund to fund a curriculum.
I think it might be helpful when we, for the one-time funds, if there's other prior, like to see what the priorities are, including this one and we can kind of see what that overall picture looks like with the competing needs, I guess, and where this one falls into it. But, I mean, I think that it seems like we have at least the starting point that it would be nice to start to move a little bit forward. But again, the one-time funds is probably the big item and are there other needs that are maybe more important in the district? I don't know the answer to that question.
It's not a good practice to use one-time funds on salaries and so, we really don't want to do that. It is the better practice to use one-time funds for something that is a one-time purchase and something that would sustain over time. A curriculum adoption can last 20, 30 years. So, it is a good use of funds. Will there be other competing? There's always, there's, there's always going to be factors out there. But our science curriculum and social studies, you know, both are very old. We've talked about science for a long time. We've had NGSS. We've had teachers writing their own curriculum. It is a huge investment and it is an investment that is wise using one-time funds. I can say that. But we would most likely also be trying, also have to use some general fund. One-time won't be enough, most likely.
Well, and there's ongoing costs associated with science curriculum, like you were saying too. So, I would just be interested, whatever we adopt, I think it would be good to know what that ongoing cost would be. And I don't think, I mean, just because it was, were to cost more, I don't, that doesn't mean I would want to rule it out because you're constantly using materials. It's just, you know. But I guess my question is more to do with just the percentage of teachers that responded. It seems really low to me. I don't know if that's normal, if this is something you see when you give a survey like this. And I understand why practically no teachers at Fairsite would have responded because they're not teaching the same things. But, you know, 14% at River and 13 at Marango. Is this normal to have this level?
I would say it is normal. Keep in mind that we also have speech teachers. We have PE teachers. We have music teachers. At McCaffrey, we have social studies teach, well, they would have voted. But we have PE teachers. We have exploratory teachers. So, my guess would be that some teachers felt maybe this doesn't pertain to me. So, I probably shouldn't vote if I'm not going to be teaching one of those core subjects. So, it does look, the number looks appropriate to me.
Okay, that's good.
And maybe if we pilot next year, maybe it's going to take us another year to save the funds. I mean, maybe we're going to have to look at, okay, what's our reserve level? What's our carryover at the end of a school year? Can we say, okay, we're going to allocate $200,000 towards a science? Maybe it's going to, going to take us a couple of years to fund it.
And that's what I was going to add. Work on a plan, a financial plan to see how much do we need difference from the general fund in order to be able to afford a $1.5 million curriculum or something. I don't know how much it costs. You'd have to start just getting a quote to get an idea, to make a plan and then see how, end of the year, each year. Maybe it takes us two years to get the difference and be able to commit to that in a few years or a year. You never know.
With the math curriculum clue, prior to the pilots, did the publishers give us a quote on what it cost?
They gave us a general quote.
Okay.
It wasn't binding, but it was a general.
General quote. So, that we could, you know, choose a few, at least get a, an idea of what it would cost.
I was just going to say, is there a way we could get the price quote for both, uh, science and social science? Because if, because if science is like 3 million, but social science is a million and a half. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we could definitely, curriculum department can reach out to the different publishers. I think they'd be happy just to give us probably quotes.
And the one-time funds are still up in the air, right? Is that correct or is that, are they?
They have said that, they provided estimates and it's close to the million dollars. Again, when I went recently, some budget workshops, they said, wait for May for more confirmation.
Okay.
It's coming and they shared other news of what's coming with COLA. There will be some projected reductions on that, but they do anticipate some of the one-time continuing.
Okay.
But it may not be at the exact same rate projections.
Bless you. Bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then what is our deadline to spend those fun, the one-time funds?
For the new ones?
Yeah, the ones we're anticipating.
Normally, they provide a few years.
Okay, so we have a little bit of time.
It would give us enough time if we would go with adoption. If it takes about a year or so, it would give us enough time to spend them.
So, would you like us to get quotes for social studies and science? Okay, we'll hold you down.
Okay, so we're ready to move on to instructional assistance, sounds like?
Yes, so the board had asked for a report on instructional assistance and so, what we've provided is a breakdown for you of how many IAs or instructional assistants we have in our district. They make up almost half of our classified staff. They are part of the CICA bargaining group. We have 144 instructional assistants in our district. 79 of the IAs work five or more hours a day. So, over half are working what we consider a full-time day. There is a breakdown for you of the different classifications of IAs we have. It varies from preschool, special education, general education, the expanded learning program, bilingual instructional assistants. And then also, we have for you the breakdown for each of those, how many hours per day they work or how many employees are working at those hours. So, you can see how many are 3.92, how many are 3.75, how many are six hours in each of the classifications. And out of these classifications, special education assistants make up the majority or at least over half. We have the majority of our full-time IAs in special education as well. You'll see, and some in the expanded learning, some bilingual instructional assistants as well. We provided for you a summary of some of their job duties. They all have different classifications and so, they all have different job duties as well. But we pulled for you some of the similarities in supporting students, whether it be for intervention, whether it be to help with our class size ratios, to support students on a day-to-day basis. It could be behavior. It could be beginning reading. We have a lot of our regular education IAs that support in kinder, first, second, and sometimes third grade to support reading intervention, small group reading support. We value our instructional assistants. They help us in many, many ways. I think our teachers would say they value, of course, they value the support but, and they, they do make up a huge part of our classified, classified workforce. So, I open it up to any other questions that the board may have at this time about our instructional assistance in the district?
Just a question, just from some couple of things I learned recently. How many substitute instructional assistants do we have?
Oh, good question. How many substitute IAs do you think we have? I don't know if I even want to guess, but I can definitely pull the report with HR tomorrow and email the board how many sub-IAs we have.
Except that, because if you have 144 IAs and I'm thinking, I'm guessing at least 10, 10% is going to be absent every given day.
Yeah. We're constantly hiring subs and we're constantly hiring IAs. We probably, I don't know if there is a day that we ever have or that we ever not have a vacancy for an instructional assistant or for a sub-instructional assistant. We have postings up constantly. And that's why we have a waitlist in the GEL program because there's a ratio that we have to meet. And until we hire another instructional assistant, we can't bring kids off that waitlist to, to join the, the group until we have enough staff. And so, and we have quite a waitlist at all of our schools and we have postings up continually to hire expanded learning IAs.
We ready to move on to LCAP goal two? Okay.
I believe you have a public comment for that report item.
I do. I'm going to wait for the introduction of the, it's for number three, I believe. I'm going to wait for the background of that and then we'll hear the public comment. Yeah, we'll hear the background and then the comment.
So, are we moving on to LCAP goal two?
Two and then number one. Yeah.
Okay.
Because the public comment is for LCAP goal two, not one. Maybe that was the confusion.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have a parent that has reached out that would like to serve on the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee, Carlos Ramirez Ramirez. He is a parent at Fairsite and McCaffrey and he would like to give back to the community and demonstrate civic engagement. And so, this is a formality to add him to the roster for the Citizens Oversight Committee. So, we will have a total of seven members now.
Great. Thank you. Okay, healthy kids survey?
Yes, thank you. I will report on the healthy kids survey. I will give you an overview, a summary of the district data and then I'm going to ask our site administrators to give a highlight from their school data. And then, are we going to project this?
I can.
Okay. Well, it might, well, we, we have it in your binder as well, but the audience might want to see it, the data. We had, we've been giving the Cal Schools healthy kids surveys for many years now, grades five through six at the elementary and grade seven, eight at the middle school. Our participation rates are there for you from 2022 to 2025. Our participation rates have increased at all levels except for the staff. Our staff participation is down. Last year, we had 246 staff members take the survey and this year, we had 237. That is about 45% of our staff that took the survey. Our parent participation really went up. Our LCAP goal was to get at least 500 parents to take the survey. You can see last year, it was only 282, or sorry, 252 and we jumped up to 582. So, that was great. We did put out there an ice cream challenge. The schools with the highest participation, parent participation, would get ice cream. We met our goal, so we ended up giving everybody ice cream cups. But the, the score, the participant, participation was really low and then we put out the ice cream and it really jumped up all of a sudden, so.
Funny how that works, huh?
Something about the ice cream. But we're really excited that we got that many parents to participate. So, looking at, I will start with our grade five students. Again, this is district-wide. We are, these scores show reporting yes, most of the time or yes, all of the time. So, there's two report, two reporting or two questions that they are, they're collecting here. And so, that's why for the students, the goal is 80% because it's all of the time or most of the time. And that is a difference for staff and parents that I'll explain. Some areas that our fifth graders met the target of 80% or higher. Students are academically motivated. There's high expectations from adults. The facilities are well-maintained and students are treated with respect. Those were all over 80% for our, our fifth graders. Looking at sixth graders, a couple of the scores, well, there's three areas that are over the 80%, some of the same ones. High expectations from adults, facilities are upkept, and students treated with respect. A couple of areas that I think we need to look at that are a little lower than we would like from our sixth grade are caring adults in school and anti-bullying climate. That's at 66 and 67. So, something we need to look at at the site level as well. And then we get into seventh grade. All categories increased for both seventh and eighth grade. I would like to note that for students, all areas increased. One of the highest scores, while it's not at 80%, it's at 72 for the seventh graders and the eighth graders are the high expectations from adults. 72% at seventh grade and 70% for our eighth graders. But definitely, the, the goal, it's moving in the right direction. Scores are going up. Not yet at 80%, but we're, we're making growth. And then looking at our parents, the goal here is 50% because it is only Wayne strongly agree. Parents could have also shown, I'm sorry, yes, they could have also shown, chosen that they agree. That was their second. So, the first choice is strongly agree. Second is agree. So, that's why the goal is 50%. Some of the areas that were areas that were closer to the fifty percent, some of the higher areas, our school has adults that really care about students, and schools treats all students with respect, facilities upkeep. And then there is an asterisk on this last one, because this one does pull agree or strongly agree. So you're looking at eighty percent goal there, is teachers responsive to a child's social and emotional needs, and that is at eighty-five percent. So that's great to see. And then for staff, we are meeting at that fifty percent with caring adult relationships, high expectations from adults, and supportive learning environment is at forty-eight, and then school is a safe place for staff is at forty-six. So close, close to meeting there.
Question?
Yes.
I know this is the Cal Schools Healthy Kids Survey, survey. Is there a way we can ask, like, change it up a little bit? So if a parent feels welcome to participate, and basically, it's only thirty-nine percent. Is there a way we can add something in there? Be like, if, if, if you don't, if you do not feel welcome to participate, what can we do to make you feel welcome to participate? Because I'm looking at these low scores, and I'm like, super frustrated, because like, okay, why?
Yeah.
Why is this score low? Like, where's the explanation, right? Facilities upkeep. I'm like, what, how come these people feel at forty-two percent?
Yeah.
That our facilities aren't up to, up to standards? Like, okay, what needs to be done?
We do have to set forty, forty-two percent is actually pretty high with the goal. The goal's fifty, because again, it's reporting strongly agree.
Yeah, I know the goal's fifty, and I don't like fifty. I think it'd be like seventy-five, eighty, like the southern standards are. And it's just frustrating, because I, the, the time and money that we have spent into facilities-
Yes.
How are they not at seventy-five, eighty percent? How is, how is your supportive student learning environment? How is it at thirty-eight? Like, what can we do as this board to help you parents feel like your student is being supported for, for learning at, at school if you don't, if you're at thirty-eight percent?
Right. What I would like to see, how I would like for them to measure this, which I could ask, is I wish they would measure strongly agree and agree, because I think agree is pretty strong, too.
Mm-hmm.
But their direction, or their comment is, well, that's why the goal's fifty percent. But I don't know if the district asked us to measure that, for them to measure it that way. They could, and I'm not sure if we can embed open-ended questions or not, but that's something I'll definitely ask.
Or at least include, include agree, strongly agree and agree.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because I'm looking at, especially when the question about safety, and I see forty-one, but then I have to remember that's only strongly agree. There could be eighty percent who have agree and strongly agree, and we don't know that. It just looks alarming. And how are you defining safety? You know, are they, are they concerned about, you know, the fence, or is there other, how are, how are they looking at that? So-
Right.
That's a little open-ended, and we don't have control over that, I realize, do we?
I don't think we can add open-ended questions. I will ask. They did let us delete some questions this year, because one of the, some of the feedback we've had from parents over the last couple of years is maybe you'll get more participation if you reduce the amount of questions, that it took too long. And so our goal was to get it down to eight to ten minutes. And so they let us do that. But I will see if there's a way they can report out for us the percentage of agree for parents and staff, and if we can add open-ended in the future.
I know for where I used to work, we did a survey, and then they use that survey to do like follow-up little workshops with, to get more input from people to kind of dive in, peel it apart a little bit more.
Focus group.
Yeah, focus group. So that might be an option, if it can work nicely into a, you know, open house or something. Maybe just, can you come in and give us a little more feedback on some of that?
Yes. And we do ask our principals to share this data with their leadership team and their school site council, because this data is part of their SIPSa, just like it's part of our LCAP, and so they have to get feedback. And so I, this data just came out, so I doubt they've had their school site council meetings yet, but they will be getting feedback from their parents and their teachers on this data. And so we can ask those questions as well. You know, what do you think we can do to improve safety? Or what do you think if it's only forty percent safe? What, is it the fencing? Is it the, the bullying on campus? Is it the, the threat of somebody saying they're going to bring a gun? You know, those types of things. Why is it that you're choosing not strongly agree?
And is there also in this survey strongly disagree? Or like, does it, or is there only two choices?
No, there's five choices. There's, there's strongly agree, agree.
No opinion.
No opinion, neutral.
And so are you also looking at the strongly disagree areas as well to kind of dive into those? Because those seems like those would be really important to look at as well. Maybe not as part of the eighty percent, but like, kind of say, okay, what else are we learning here with this information?
That's not in the reports that they currently give us, but I can ask if they can give us that in reports.
Yeah, maybe dive in. And then I just had two comments. One is on the bullying, I think, kind of along the same lines, what do you consider bullying? Because I've seen instances sort of in today's age where people maybe just disagree with something someone says, and they say, you're bullying me. So I think sort of diving into that, too, like, what, what do you consider bullying? Because it can be different things for different people.
Yeah.
And then the other thing I noticed was there was a real disconnect between the students feeling motivated and then the staff feeling that they were, the students were motivated. And I wasn't sure what that disconnect was.
Yes. Students were saying they feel they're motivated, but then staff were saying, no, they don't think kids are motivated.
Yeah, so I don't know what can be done there, but.
I just wanted to make two observations that I had, and one of them was on, parents feel welcome to participate and being thirty-nine percent. And I just want to say, like, I'm a huge advocate for like, any effort, I think, that could be done to let parents know that they're welcome to come. Like, I know for Lake Canyon has the dads-on-duty thing, and I think that's awesome. And I just know for myself, like, have the dividends that's paid, you know, helping the kids and whatnot. And so I think, I don't know if other schools do it, but I think that definitely should. And I think like, it should be in writing, like, maybe in the letters that go out or whatnot, or in the monthly newsletters. I only knew about it because I remember coming home one day, and my wife was like, hey, did you know that you're welcome to go participate and volunteer at school? And I'm like, oh, I didn't know that. And she's like, yeah, dad's on duty. And I'm like, oh, okay. So I think anything that could be done, like, actually put it in writing and put it in front of parents' faces, like, hey, you know, you want to come volunteer once a month or once a week? Like, that could be huge. And then the last thing I thought was interesting was that, the difference on the bullying. So like, for grade five, like, anti-bullying, seventy-two percent, kids thought like an anti-bullying climate. But then when you actually asked the teachers, it was at forty percent. And like, it was a thirty-two percent difference between like, what the parents thought, or, or sorry, staff, and what the students thought. And I thought it was rather interesting that like, student, the, the staff had relatively lower number, but the parents, the students, it was much higher. So I thought that was like, pretty fascinating.
It's kind of hard, it's almost impossible to compare it like that, because the students are answering yes all the time or most of the time. So you're getting a higher percentage, whereas the parents and the staff, it's only measuring agree all of the time, or strongly agree. I guarantee you, those percentages for parents and staff would be higher if it was measuring the first two choices, strongly agree and agree, like students. So it's hard to say, okay, students are at eighty percent, staff's at forty. So I'll, I'll look into that to see if there's anything we can do in getting them to add that agree with staff and parents.
Well, the other thing about this is that the students basically have to take the survey. Is that right? I mean-
They can opt out.
They can, but you know, if everyone's sitting down and doing the survey, it's, they're a captive audience, whereas staff, parents, teachers, teachers don't, I mean, they, staff doesn't have to take it.
Well, we re, we, it is, it's required because it's on contract time.
Okay.
But obviously, when you only have forty-five percent of your staff that took it, obviously, they not-
They're not doing it.
Everybody took it. But we did give contracted time to take the survey.
Because your sample sizes are not the same, and that makes a big difference. That can skew your numbers quite a bit, too.
Yeah. Yeah. But no, good questions to ask Cal Schools to see if there's anything that they can help us with on this. And then we will turn it over to our principals and our assistant principals. I asked if they'd be prepared to highlight just one strength in their data and one area for improvement. And we have Fair Sight Elementary first. Laura Marquez is with us via Zoom.
Laura, are you there?
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Well, for Fair Sight, for the parent survey, we met the fifty percent goal in several areas and got close in a couple of others. So that was very encouraging. And then for areas of improvement in the staff, for the staff results, well, my eyes immediately go to facilities upkeep, eleven percent, and supportive staff working environment, nineteen percent. And for facilities, a lot has been done to improve Fair Sight, to keep it in good shape, but it is a very old school. So I think that has a lot to do with it. And then the support, supportive staff working environment, of, of course, I would want that to be higher. And so I'm going to have to find a way to get specific information from, from staff on what led to that low percentage, so that I can work to improve, so that the score will go up.
Thank you, Laura. We have Greer. We have Leah Wheeler.
Good evening. For Greer, I found, looking at fifth and sixth, they have very different views on school at the moment. Sixth grade, it's springtime. Fifth graders, a big area of strength, I felt was, they were more in the, aligned with, treated with respect, which Lois highlighted earlier. And then sixth graders were safe, felt safe at school, not as much on the fifth grade end. An area of improvement, I felt overall, after talking to staff a little bit about results, because we shared them, and also with kids, I checked in with a few of them. They want more connectedness to school, and they felt if they were more connected, they would have other areas on that survey improved. So that would be an area of focus for next year for Greer.
I'm just curious, Leah, did they give you any examples of what that looks like?
They want spirit days to happen all the time. One of the kids, about how, how would you want this to improve? Soccer every day in the field, things like that.
Kona ice every day?
Kona ice every week. Yeah. We said we'll work on it. We'll work on it.
Have to help them gear their thoughts to something that's doable.
Yep.
And then we have Lake Canyon, Judy Hayes.
Yes, an area of strength across both fifth and sixth for us were kind of the combination of students feeling academically motivated and feeling like they had a high expectations from the adults, which was great. An area for growth and, and focus for us is getting parents to feel like they're welcome to participate. And I know we're just seeing the, the highest metric. I appreciate that there's conversation about that. An example for you, I, I pulled the metric for supportive student learning environment for the parents, and the top metric was only thirty-five percent, but when you combine in the second, it comes up to ninety-six percent. So you can see it's much closer to a hundred when you look at the parent and staff surveys, so.
All right. Thank you. And then Marengo Ranch, Joshua, sell the thing.
Good evening. As an area of strength at Marengo, high expectations from adults was an area, starting at fifth grade, eighty-four percent, sixth grade, seventy-seven percent, and adults really feel at a hundred percent that they are supporting and motivating students, which is great. An area for improvement, I think that was already kind of mentioned is, you know, students could feel that they have more meaningful participation in school. Forty percent, fifth grade, sixth, uh, sixth grade was thirty-four percent. And I think some of the areas that highlight that is, do teachers and grown-ups at school ask you about your ideas? Do teachers and grown-ups give you a chance to solve school problems? Do teachers ask you what you want to learn? So I think you can always focus on, like was said, guiding them, right? Maybe isn't Kona ice every day, but there is something, and the more they can contribute, the more the connection's going to be.
Thank you. River Oaks?
All right. River, kind of different on their responses, but they also, in the area of high expectations from adults in both fifth and sixth, I do want to highlight the cohort that we have right now in sixth grade at River Oaks, fifth graders last year. That increased this year, that they actually felt more connected to school. So that was good to see that increase. An area of improvement that I, when looking at the data and also met with leadership yesterday and showed them these results, and we talked a lot about it, was they felt like we need to do some community building amongst the school, more whole-school activities, and even consider small things like buddying them up with peers, like having a younger group of kids with older group of kids, and maybe that will help that community connection to increase that area of being connected to school.
Thank you, Leah.
You're welcome.
And Valley Oaks, David Nelson.
Thank you. Good evening. So I looked at something that I hadn't really looked at before, and that was taking last year's fifth grade, right, in twenty-twenty-four, and then looking at how the current sixth graders did with, with the same set of questions. And different than just about every year in the past ten years, where typically, you get fifth grade answers that are higher, at least at Valley Oaks, and then in sixth grade, those same kids have lower, you know, they report lower scores in sixth grade. That's been almost every year. Different this year was the sixth graders this year, who were fifth graders last year, and out of the nine categories, in six of them, they either maintained or improved over the previous year. So that's something that's unusual, and unusual in a, in a good way. A data metric that, that pops out in, in a real positive way. The same kids looking at the same questions in, in two years, showing an improvement in how they feel about the school. So that was, that was something that was really cool. And then I, I think probably similar to what others have said, you know, some of our lower scores have to do with students feeling connected to school. And that's really, I think, maybe having a discussion or something with students, and what do they feel that means? Is it really like, just doing more recess? Is it really just doing more Kona ice? Like, or is there something else, right? What is it that would help them feel connected to school? And if it's, you know, kind of the more, I don't want to call them superficial things, but if, if there's some of those things, well, then maybe we do need to do some more of those. But if there's other things that they would feel, that, you know, would have them feel more connected to the school, that are maybe more academic or relationship-based, I would want to know that. And that's something, and we just got the, the data, so I don't really know that yet, but that is an area that we would like to improve.
Thank you. And we have McCaffrey Middle School.
Yes, I'll also, I'll also report for McCaffrey. One of the areas of strength was the focus that we've had on school culture and helping students feel connected and motivated and safe. And so, you know, with middle school, really, our guide is watching that increase. And I think if you look at those scores, that's something that you do see from the areas of connected to school, caring adults, high expectations. And, and it is nice to see those scores move up. An area of focus for us, I think, you know, and I agree with Trustee Ward, is helping parents, especially middle school, feel welcome on campus and feel like they can participate, because so many have had the opportunity to participate in elementary, and sometimes you get there and, and discover, what am I going to do now? And I think the idea of focus groups is a very strong idea, to find like, what would you want to do? What can you do? How can we connect with people? Because there have been things that we have done, the coffee chats with the principals, the community events, open house is now a showcase, it's a family event, information meetings for our incoming seventh graders, information meetings for our eighth. So there's a lot that we do, but I think there's always, there's always more that can, that can be done. So I think that's the focus. And just as a quick aside, I, as one of those people who always has struggled to put in strongly agree, I'm going to try to recommit myself to putting strongly agree on surveys more often, so.
I did notice, just to, Valley Oaks seemed like they really, those facilities changes made a huge difference in all areas. So yay for that. Glad to know those, those results are coming in.
I, I was going to state the obvious with that, with our fifth and sixth grade students being in the new building. And I think sixth grade was at like ninety-one percent, you know? But I was like, no, I'm not going to state that. But, but at least they're recognizing, right? They're recognizing, hey, like, there's a lot of really nice things being done here and for me. And so both fifth and sixth grade recognized that and, and reported, so.
And I think that's important for the bond, too. Like, that's like a good indication that those things are- Like, that's like a good indication that those things are making tangible changes. I also noticed the staff improved and almost, there was some notable increases in staff as well.
Thank you for noticing that, because like about 30 seconds ago, I said to Leah, I said, hey, check this out. And just the change in data over the last two years to the third, you know, to this year with our staff, I think that's a reflection of a lot of different things. But we have a great staff and, you know, things are really gelling, you know, in a lot of different ways, not just with scores, but with relationships and everything else. And you can see it. I mean, it's, I mean, it's not even close, right? In some of those, in some of those areas. So really, really good to see. Thank you for saying that.
And then I just, I'm like a big fan of high expectation from adults. I just wonder if, when the students are answering, do they see that as a good thing? Hopefully also, or they're like, gosh, they expect so much from me. But I mean, I was happy to see that was a really common theme there, that there was that high expectation from adults. So, thank you.
I'll just give two observations on two things. I think that I see every day that I think help build the connectedness to school. And one of my things is music in the morning. With the music going in the morning, like kids are getting pumped up and the energy, and they're feeling good and happy. And another one being the bucket fillers, where you're starting with like three nice things about somebody. I think those start with like a real positive vibe. I see that, and I think it's great.
I just wanted to go back to the McCaffrey parents feel welcome to participate. It's, you almost can't put it in the same category as the elementaries, because middle school is a time where kids, your parents are letting them have a little more independence, and they're more doing their own thing. But also, I have to read the question as, do they feel welcome to participate by their own kids? Because we know at the age, the kids don't want you to be there. So maybe they don't feel welcome because their kids are saying, Mom, don't, Dad, don't, you know? So I, I mean, I'm, it's just a thought of looking, you know, I'm looking at the data going, what perspective, when the parents answering the question, are they thinking, you know?
Yeah. Good point. And Cal schools will tell you that typically statewide, the data for middle school is lower than elementary. So, yeah.
It's a different time.
Yeah. And then we just provided for the board to the, they call them school climate report cards for each school. It's showing you our scores for student reports compared to the state average over the last few years. And we're doing very well in many of the areas. We are exceeding the state average. And each school has its own report.
Anything else on that? Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the PE and music teacher report, and we'll hear the comment after that.
So I wanted to give the board an update that we have had. As you know, we've had a vacancy in music all year. We've had a bonus, and it just, we were not able to recruit a music teacher for this current year, but we have successfully hired a music teacher for the 25-26 school year. So we will be back to nine preparation teachers for elementary. That's five PE and four music teachers. That is more than sufficient preparation time needed for the amount of classes and for the amount, for the student enrollment that we have currently. We're very fortunate to have the level of music and PE teachers that we do. The district continues to prioritize music. We have had five music teachers to serve six schools since 2015. It's been since 2008, 2009 that we had a full-time music teacher at each school site. And that was due to the enrollment. The enrollment was much higher then. And we did not go down to, so if you look at the last time, so we've had five music teachers since 2015, and that's what we currently have now. And looking over the last almost eight years, our highest enrollment was in 2017. We still only had five music teachers for the district, and we had 200 more kids than we do now. Our enrollment in 2017 was 3,642, five music, five music teachers total. Now we have 3,458 kids, and we still have five music teachers serving six school sites. I know there's been some discussion or actually comments around the different levels or the different opportunities of music at each of our school sites. And our school sites are not cookie cutter. They are, they do offer different music opportunities based on the expertise and the knowledge of the staff, both the music staff and other staff. For example, we had guitar presented here. That's only offered at one school site, and that's because of Prop 28 funds, and that's because the teacher is teaching that after school. We have piano, bells, and ukulele at a couple of our sites. Not at all of our sites, because that's not an expertise area for every music teacher. We have some sites that have a larger band program, and that is because of, I would say, the passion of that music or band teacher. And so it is accurate that the music opportunities or the arts opportunities are different at all of our school sites. And I don't ever see them ever being the same, because our staff is different. And so I just wanted to point that out there. Bells is another thing. You've seen bells. That's only offered at one school site because they have a staff member or a retiree that they come, that comes in and supports that school in that area. So I feel like we have some great programs and some great offerings out there. And music is very, very important. And this district has committed to serving music for many, many years. I can share my own kids were in music when they were at River Oaks in band in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And one of the reasons that I kept them in elementary school in Galt, because we live in Elk Grove, was because Elk Grove did not offer music at elementary level. And this was back, I don't know, my kids are 19 and 18 now. But I kept them in Galt for one of those reasons, because they had music at the elementary level. It's very unique still, even with Prop 28 funds, to have the level of music that we have in this district. And I don't want to cut that. I'm, I, we need the music. I want to see it. But the reality is, the nine preparation teachers that we have is more than sufficient to serve the needs and to serve the prep classes that we need, based on our enrollment right now. Maybe that will change. Maybe our enrollment will go up, and we will need to hire another teacher. And I wanted to share, there's been some questions about, you know, how much funding we're giving to music. And so there's a table here that shows you that we have been increasing every year, music. We are up to, to date, we are up to almost over $83,000 in just supplies and services to our music program. We've used one-time funds and Prop 28 to buy musical instruments, to support stages, to support sound systems, to send music teachers to trainings. And the salaries are going up as well. There's a little dip between this year and last year. That's just because of the vacancy we've had this year, the difference between a full-time teacher and substitute pay. But you can, I mean, we're now, district is supporting, financially is supporting music at $619,000. And it's been as low as $461,000. So I just, I just want to say, highlight how much we value our music program and our arts program. There's a lot of wonderful things going on in arts now because of Prop 28. And we will have a report at our next board meeting. We have to bring to you our annual Prop 28 expenditure report. And we will add some of the, highlight some of the great things that students are getting now. I know, Annette, you've seen square dancing and all kinds of things that are going on out there. And so.
Yeah, let's go ahead with our public comment, and then we can, there can be additional discussion if needed.
My daughter is a sixth grader at Lake Canyon. This year, her band teacher was Ms. Hill. Last year, she had Mr. Wright. The year before was Mr. Fiaro. The year before that was Mr. O'Connell Dua. And the year before that, she was enrolled in the Home Learning Academy, which was based at Valley Oaks that year. So she also had Mr. O'Connell Dua. My daughters enjoyed music class with every one of those teachers that she's had. But she also recently said that she wishes she could have had any one of them for the entire time. Having a consistent music teacher truly does matter for the students. I want this board to think of each of the five elementary schools like a sports team. Now imagine that there are only four coaches. These coaches are told to figure out when they will leave their teams during the week to temporarily go and coach the fifth team. This wouldn't be good for any of the players, nor would it be good for the coaches. We have evidence of this by our music teachers resigning and leaving our district. We also see the detrimental effect that it's had by looking at how small the LC band is this year. Fifth graders were not given a chance for, to be in band. This was an admin choice, not a music teacher choice. And many of the sixth graders decided not to do band because they did not have enough playing time. We also see evidence of how detrimental not having a music teacher has been by the fact that the LC Spring Concert was just canceled. This is because the band would have had so few practices. If they had a band teacher three times a week, or even just twice a week, that would have made a huge difference. Let's be clear, Lake Canyon has not had a position posted for a music teacher for well over five years. There's no plan that I'm aware of to make a music teacher position for the 25-26 school year. During the October 2024 board meeting, we were shown a presentation for the Prop 28 funds. LC received an allocation of over $76,000 for the 23-24 school year, of which $61,000 were for salaries and benefits. The 24-25 allocation was over $106,000. That would have made the 80% salary and benefits over $85,000. Those funds should have been used to provide Lake Canyon students with a full-time music teacher. I'm asking you as a board to see if you can find ways to fund the VAPA items with something other than the Prop 28 funds for Lake Canyon, and to actually have a motion at the next board meeting to hire a music teacher for the Lake Canyon site. We deserve, as music teachers, an up or down vote from each of you. Our music teachers deserve to build solid music programs at each of their school sites, not to have burnout. And music is vital for our students. And right now, Lake Canyon, I'm not asking for equity. I know every school is going to be different. But we need, I'm sorry, I'm not asking for equality. What we need is equity. Lake Canyon does not have a good music program at all, and it's not fair to their students or their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything, new questions or anything on that?
No, I just wanted to circle back, and I totally agree, music is important. I have just been really pleased to see the list of activities and like going to plays in Sacramento that I just don't think a lot of students would maybe even know how to do that. And so I think that that's super, you know, fantastic that they're able to do that. Because, you know, once you go once, you kind of know how to do it and what's involved. And then you can go the second and third and fourth time. But that first time can be really scary to go figure out what's this all about, or even to know that it's there. So I think that exposure with those Prop 28 funds is huge. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. I went and visited Greer a couple of weeks ago. That day, the, a bunch of the classes were just getting back from the B Street Theater. So it was really, it's good knowing that those Prop 28 funds are being used in a variety of ways.
Anything else that we have? Okay. Okay, let's move on to our general obligation bond.
This will be very fast at this time. Just want to let you know, we had a successful bond sell this morning. Happened this morning, went around 9:30 or so, Alejandro. It was very successful. Six bids came in, and the winning bid went to Morgan Stanley. And so we have a 4.8 true interest cost, which is very good. The, our financial advisors are very pleased with that. They said it's a very good interest rate that will structure the debt service that we need. They were very happy with the six. Some very big investment firms that were bidding on this bond. And our financial advisors will be sharing more information about the sell and the debt service at our future meetings. So funds should be dispersed probably around between May 7th and May 10th. It was a 13.5 is what we sold. So half of the, half of the bond money.
Great. Okay, so we can move on to pre-funding the other post-employment benefits?
So just to provide some background, around December, we presented the cost of liability for retirement and how the district does the pay-as-you-go option. And I know Louise presented that there's other options to reduce the liability, and we brought more information a few months ago regarding what the options are. Now, we have Ryan Nicosio from PARZ Public Agency Retirement Services. And he's going to report on the PARZ OPEB Trust Program for pre-funding other post-employment benefits and provide the board some information about it more in detail. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Board President, members of the board, Superintendent Yount. Again, my name is Ryan Nicosio. I'm a representative of PARZ Public Agency Retirement Services. Actually, been with the company now for 27 years, senior vice president. And had, you know, what PARZ does is we consult and administer retirement plans and programs. We've actually worked with the school district a few times with early retirement incentives, I think going back to 2016, 2019, and 21. So we have experience working with the district. But today, I'm here to speak on the 115 trust. You could advance a slide, please. So in this dynamic, PARZ serves as the ongoing trust administrator, meaning we take care of all the administrative duties with regard to processing contributions when they are put in, when the district's ready to take out dispersments, we would process that, sending out periodic statements on a monthly and annual basis to the, to the district, monitoring any planned compliance. So with any changes with regard to GASB reporting requirements, state government code IRS, just ensuring that the program stays in compliance. And in this dynamic, again, PARZ does not touch or handle any of the assets. We simply take direction from the district. You have the trustee US Bank, who is tasked as the plan fiduciary and custodian of the assets. And you have their banking, backing as the fifth largest commercial bank in the nation and one of the largest 115 trustees. The investment management is provided by PFM Trust, PFM Asset Management. They have a variety of investment portfolios available to the district based on potential risk tolerance, investment horizons, et cetera. So again, those are sort of the three entities involved with the trust administration of the 115 trust. Next slide, please. And what the trust is, is really it's a financial tool available to participating agencies, such as your district, to pre-fund a liability, in this case, your retiree health liability or OPEB. So rather than leaving it in your general fund, you would put it into a 115 trust. And by doing so, you have sort of IRS protections and backing that any income derived from those assets are tax exempt. And so that asset growth, along with the contributions, helps address your liabilities. And at the end of the day, you always have access to those assets, because whether for reimbursement directly to the district or paying directly to the provider. Because with the 115 trust, those assets are meant for those specific liabilities or expenses related to your OPEB. And part of the trust is that there is no setup cost associated with the program. So fees are only, come into play once assets are put into the, into the trust. And at the end of the day, you wouldn't pay that out of the general fund. It would just be paid from the plan assets and the growth that'd be generated from that. Just a sampling of neighboring districts, school districts and community college districts, or education districts in the area. You know, again, we have over 500 agencies. You know, that encompasses cities, counties, special districts. But, you know, want to highlight some education districts locally or in the area that are taking advantage of utilizing this 115 trust for pre-funding OPEB. And the next slide, one more, please. You know, starting off, you know, taking a look at the district's valuation report. Think of your valuation report as a snapshot of your retiree health liabilities as of the specific date. You know, this is always changing or gets updated on a periodic basis to kind of show what the true liabilities are. And with the change in reporting requirements from GASB, this is a line item on your financial statements. Previously, it was a footnote, but now it's a line item, not only taking into account the liability, but also assets that you have addressing those liabilities. So, you know, a snapshot of the most recent valuation report as of June 30, 2024, liabilities, just over $6 million. Because there is no trust set up by the district, Because there is no trust set up by the district, the net fiduciary position is at zero. So if you were to utilize a one-fifteen trust, anything you put in would go directly to offset that liability. So as a result of no one-fifteen trust set up yet, the net OPEB liability, which is reported on your financial statements, is that six million dollars. And sort of, it gets into sort of the why are agencies pre-funding liabilities? Next couple of slides just highlights that. And this is maybe a good place to start with that, look at that valuation report is that, you know, by setting assets into a one-fifteen trust, you can earn a higher rate of return than you would through your general fund. In turn, those assets, as they grow, as I mentioned, tax exempt, help offset or address those liabilities. So you kind of get the benefit of earning a higher rate of return than you would through your general fund, as well as those assets directly offsetting those liabilities. You know, sort of the rule of thumb in the previous slide with the valuation report was that for every one percent increase in that discount rate that's being used, you can lower your liabilities by ten to twelve percent. So that kind of helps, again, part of the pre-funding is reducing those liabilities and having those assets to offset those liabilities. And yeah, with a number of other reasons as well. You know, you're protecting these benefits that are paid for your employees of the district. It's good financial planning or outlook. GFOA looks at that as best practice. So, you know, aside from lowering your liabilities, having assets that offset, diversifying your assets, you know, just additional reasons. The previous slide, if you could go back one, I'm sorry. The, available to the district are these different target index-based strategies. By using an index-based strategy, you have the benefit of taking on asset, equity holdings as part of the asset allocation to try or earn a higher rate of return, while at the same time lowering the cost of the portfolio management fees because they are index funds. So you have the, the choice of four different options that allow you to, you know, different portfolios to choose from. You know, part of that would be taking a look at that valuation report to see, you know, what is your discount rate? So that ties into what you're trying to achieve. If you could go back a couple of slides, I think. Yeah, right there. Okay. And then, next slide, please. Just historical returns of that potential earnings from top to bottom, as you're more aggressive down to you're more conservative. You know, showing sort of that higher allocation with equity holdings, potentially a higher rate of return. You know, we have transparent returns, or we try to be transparent in what we're showing. So we have a one, three, and five-year historical returns to show you, you know, so that, you know, potentially what can be earned by utilizing that trust. And then the next slide just gets into a comparison of, you know, with CalPERS' SERBIT, which is their version of the one-fifteen trust for pre-funding, kind of on a net performance fee analysis. So not only taking into account the fees associated with the program, but also the returns, and on a net performance fee basis over a one, three, five-year period, the PARZ trust with the PFM Asset Management overseeing the investments has done very well over a one, three, five-year period, outperforming CalPERS. Next slide just gets into the fees. As I mentioned earlier, this is a fee-based structure where there's no cost to set up the program. Fees only begin once assets are actually put into the trust. For PARZ, it starts at twenty-five basis points, which is one quarter of one percent, and then goes down as assets grow. And then US Bank and PFM Asset Management, based on this target index-based strategy approach, which are lower-based fees, you're looking at just over seven basis points for those, fee for that. And next slide, please. And then, part of the administration or making the ease of administration for your district, really, we try to take off the administrative burden of the program. Really, we just start with a adoption of a resolution to participate in the trust for the district. At that time, after the adoption, PARZ would send out a signature-ready documentation to the district upon receiving everything back. We'd work with the trustee, US Bank, to set up the account. Generally takes about one to two weeks to set up. At that point, it'd be ready for the district. We have some districts or agencies that will set up the trust, and once they have monies or are ready to move forward, they can submit the contributions at a later date. Other agencies are ready to move forward right away. But there's, again, no requirement as to how much you put in, when you put in. Again, that's all part of the discretion available to the district, that local control. And then ongoing, we would just monitor the program and coordinate with the district to review the program, ensure things running smoothly on a periodic basis, et cetera, so.
So Ryan, the, the board could choose to open up a trust and put zero dollars in?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It's not unusual for agencies to set up the trusts, you know, and later down the line, when they're ready to make a deposit, or if they come into additional monies, then they can do so. Again, that's part of that local control and discretion of the district, so. I went through this fairly quickly, wanted to provide information on a concise basis. I am available for questions, if you have any.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So the next steps would be, if this is something the board would want to think about and see if we're interested in opening up a trust, knowing that we don't have to commit to anything financially at this time. I do want to add that we do have funds in Fund Twenty, which is a retirement account, not in Fund One or General Fund, that can be used to fund it without implicating our reserves or has any, anything to do with General Fund. And it could be just a beginning start, a startup amount, whatever the board feels comfortable with. And then we could decide on a planning annually of how much we should be contributing or what we feel, based on what priorities at that time decide at a later date on, on an amount.
And is that money just sitting there not drawing interest, right?
Very little interest.
So if we were to choose to put that into a trust, we're going to draw more interest?
Correct. It's been sitting there about ten years, ten, fifteen years.
So my question on that is, what is the one-time setup fee? Because I see here these cost point-two-five percent for zero to ten million, but I don't see like a one-time setup cost.
There are no setup costs associated with the program.
Okay.
So we're only paying cost if we're using the funds?
If assets are put into the trust.
Okay, so if we put, okay, so if we put money in there, then you're going to take some fees to manage the funds based on the interest we're?
Yeah, just based on the participation in the program.
Based on the participation.
Yeah, ideally, the money would earn enough to cover not only the cost of the, of the program, but, you know, earn towards that discount rate above and beyond, so.
And I've seen it over time previously, that eventually get to a point where it pays itself, and it's just growing from the interest over time. And that's a long term. We'll see that growth in a long term.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Is there something over here?
Thank you.
You guys? Okay, oh, good. All right. Thank you very much.
Is there any direction from the board to continue this and, and look at opening a trust? It'd have to go to another meeting for an actual vote? Is there any direction there or just hold on this? What would you like to do?
I think that would seem reasonable to move forward with looking at a trust. I think it seems more reasonable to pre-fund it, especially like the interest rate or the cost is like only a quarter of a percent of the fee to run it. It seems like if you're producing more in what's coming in than that cost, then it would seem reasonable to do this rather than keep it in the general fund, I would think.
Yeah, I agree. I think we're on that path. I think we need to continue unless there's a real clear indication that we shouldn't.
Okay, we'll keep moving on that.
Yeah, that was my question, was is there any down, like what would be any downside, just?
The only times where, where the down would be, there'd be a year, let's say, we're going through some recession in ten, fifteen years. We could decide not to fund any, not even put any money in it because you're not, we're not in a position to put money in it now, and we're just going to hold off on it. So that's the flexibility we have.
Yeah, I would say the downside would be a potential market risk or fluctuations. It's kind of the inherent risk, but, yeah. I mean, generally speaking, the OPEB liabilities or retiree health liabilities, they're long-term liabilities, you know, thirty, forty years. So ideally, you would have a long-term investment horizon for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, we'll continue to move on forward though with the board.
Okay, so for Williams Uniform Complaint Process?
And we have no complaints to report?
Good. And then, school calendars?
Calendars, yes. Let me see, who do we have first? Let me get to that. Sorry. We have Fair Sight, Laura Marquez.
I'm here.
Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, well, like many schools, lots of exciting things happening as the end of the year approaches. And at Fair Sight as well, lots of field trips planned. But I'd like to highlight two events in particular. Our open house is May ninth. And at Fair Sight, it is done differently. Open house is the first thirty minutes of class. So all of the morning classes have open house, eight to eight-thirty, and families are welcome to come and see all of the wonderful projects that students have created throughout the year. And then for the PM classes, it's eleven-thirty to twelve. And then a couple Fridays later, we have our picnic day and color run, and that's always a very fun time. Our campus is packed with families who come to eat lunch with their children and then watch them or participate with them in the color run as the little ones run one very long lap. It lasts about five minutes, but it's super cute.
Thank you. Greer, Leah?
All right, May is full of great events. One of the favorite things I've seen at Greer is the Three Piggy Opera. I don't know if you've ever been able to come, but it's fantastic. Second grade puts on a Three Piggy Opera where they perform. Look at, this is like.
It's, it's a good one.
It's adorable. That's happening on Friday, May ninth. It's right in the morning, early morning at eight fifteen. And then we have the pleasure of joining River Oaks and Valley Oaks. Our sixth graders take off together to Sly Park, which is an amazing opportunity for our kids in Galt going together because they form these bonds in sixth grade at Sly Park that carries to the middle school. It allows three of our schools to join up there, which is wonderful. And then on the twenty-eighth, sixth grade celebration, along with our picnic on the green and open house. And that begins at twelve o'clock.
Thank you. Lake Canyon, Judy?
We have our, our service learning initiative for the year kicks off with our nonprofit guests representing the American Heart Association, K9 Companions, and It Takes Guts organizations. And our students will hear about their work in the local community and then raise funds to support them. And then also, the last week of May, our sixth graders are heading up to Sly Park. So another exciting month.
Thank you. Morengo, Joshua?
May is also the month of field trips. I won't share each one of them, but there's a lot of grades going on, a lot of wonderful field trips. But areas to highlight, on the fourteenth, we have our picnic on the grounds, and that extends into our open house from twelve to two. Also, on the twenty-third, Morengo's Got Talent, one-thirty to two-thirty, in for some, some high levels of skills and abilities. And then sixth graders have their, their pool day and trip, the thirtieth, and field days on the twenty-ninth. So just a lot of things to look forward to.
River Oaks, Leah?
All right. River Oaks is in the same boat as Greer with going to Sly Park. One special event that I recall being a mom at River Oaks, a kindergartner, was they do a kindergarten Mother's Day tea, and it's just adorable. So that's going on on the ninth. And then their picnic on the grounds is, and open house is on the same month, but on the twenty-first. And then Morengo, similar, as Morengo with They've Got Talent. It's River Oaks Talent Show on the twenty-eighth.
Yes, I still have my vases from Mother's Day tea from kindergarten at River Oaks with both my children in my office.
Yep, I still have mine as well. Loved it.
All right, Valley Oaks, Steven?
Hi, thank you. So I'd like to highlight on May first is when we're going to have our open house. And if you've been to our open house, Dia del Niño, Children's Day celebration before, you know that when I say there's thousands of people there, it's not an exaggeration. We really do have a large percentage of the east or the west side of Galt at our school on that day, where we have children's performances, singing, sometimes dancing, that precedes the open house portion. So it's, it's a wonderful event. There's food, music. I mean, it's, it's just a great day. And it, it falls in line with when Dia del Niño is celebrated in, in Mexico on April thirtieth. And so it's as close to that as we could, we could make it, and it's a great day. And if you have the opportunity to come by and, and check it out, even if it's just for a little bit, the performances and things like that are on the earlier side. And then after that is the, the open house walkthroughs. I also want to highlight May twenty-second, which is our Valley Oaks Spring Concert. And as you, as you, you know, heard a little bit today, we have Mr. Ansel Duas, a wonderful band and choir director. And he really puts everything into teaching these kids. And we have a huge band and huge choir and so much energy and enthusiasm for, for that. And so that'll, no doubt will be another great concert. And then the last one that I want to highlight is on the twenty-seventh. And this is probably one of our, our favorite days of the school year. It's when the graduating high school seniors come back to the school and do a high school or do a senior walk at the school. And our, our students at the elementary level cheer for them and do the, you know, the soccer line, and they run underneath it. And then, at least at Valley, every school's a little bit different. We have a little assembly, and the high school seniors get to present themselves, talk a little bit about themselves. And then we have some speakers. So it's, it truly is one of the, one of the really cool days of the school year, seeing kids, you know, six years later that look like, you know, adults, because most of them are adults, and listening to them and what they're going to be doing in the future. So another wonderful day.
I think you might have a special delivery too, by the way.
He did it.
That's my husband, by the way.
How did Mr. Nelson get something?
Look at that, all right.
Mine's at home, right?
Special treatment, very special treatment.
All right, he's, he's a good man. I thought it was in jest when I said it, but I, I did include you, though, just so you know.
And then we have McCaffrey, Joshua.
All right, middle school excitement as well. The main areas to highlight, if you can, come on out. Open house on the eighth at five-thirty, open house showcase. Avid is going to be in our BFLC. There's going to be a band concert, art showcase, and food trucks galore, and just a really nice family event to have that evening. Another area is, of course, getting to all of the eighth grade activities that come before and, you know, promotion. So we also have the high school senior walk on the twenty-seventh, eighth grade promotion awards night on the twenty-eighth from six to seven-thirty. Then eighth grade promotion field trip, they're going to get to go bowling. And eighth grade promotion dance is on that Friday, the thirtieth. And then, of course, transitioning into the next week, since we end on Wednesday. It all comes very, very fast, but it's an exciting time. And yeah, feel free to come by if you can for any of those.
Thank you. Lots of great activities to attend this time of year.
All right. So let's go to the consent calendar, two-four, two-point-five-eight-six.
All right, just one highlight I would like to, the human resources consent calendar, we have some retirements, some big ones here. We have Victor Coleman. He's retiring after seven years as a custodian in our district. We have Diane Smith, who is retiring after twenty-nine years. She's been serving as a secretary one at Morengo Ranch, but twenty-nine years in the district. And then we have Shelley Zimmerman retiring after twenty years in the district, and she's currently custodian at Valley Oaks, so. the district, and she's currently custodian at Valley Oaks. So thank all of these employees for their dedication and years of service, and we wish them the best in retirement.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve two four two point five eight six?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion from Matthew Ward to approve item number two four two five eight six, the consent calendar, seconded by Wesley Cagle. Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Annette Coonsy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Two four two point five eight eight, consideration of approval of recommendation of reading, reading difficulties risk screener instrument to be administered beginning in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Thank you. A new requirement in California related to reading screener states that beginning with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, a school district shall assess each pupil in kindergarten through second grade for risk of reading difficulties, including possible neurological disorders such as dyslexia. In January, a team of six K-two teachers representing all elementary schools, as well as two administrators, participated in the selection of a reading screener. The team heard presentations from three different agencies. One was AMIRA, the second one was M-Class with Dibbles, and the third one was Multitudes. All three screeners are available for kindergarten through grade two, both in English and Spanish. The team is recommending Multitudes, developed by the UC San Francisco Dyslexia Center, as the reading screener to be used for the twenty-five, twenty school year. By identifying the early signs of reading difficulties, we can better intervene before challenges become barriers to success. So we are asking for board approval to start using Multitudes starting next year.
So my question is, do they come actually to the school from San Francisco, like send staff out here to assess the students? Is that how that works?
No, what we will do is we will use the screeners that they developed. They will train our staff, they will train our administrators, and teachers would administer this assessment one-on-one. And again, this is a screener. This would be in addition to the district assessments that we already give. But this could highlight possibly reading difficulties that our current local assessments don't catch.
So I was having this conversation with somebody yesterday or the day before about like when, what age is it that most of these kids, somebody diagnoses or catches that they're having reading difficulties, like with dyslexia, dyslexia? Do you have any idea?
I would say that by, within six weeks of kindergarten, we can already see what children might struggle a little bit more. We don't have a tool in the classrooms that would assess for dyslexia. But our current DRA, our district assessments, the goal of those assessments is to start monitoring, you know, what children are not learning in the same way as maybe the rest of the class. Again, each child is individual. Sometimes children struggle in kinder, and then in first grade, everything clicks and they're fine. But this, again, would be a, a general screener that could potentially identify, again, areas that we don't have the ability to do with our current local assessments. But it, it could start as early as kinder, where we start noticing that reading could be an issue for some children.
What does the screening process entail?
Generally speaking, high level.
It's generally, it's a one-on-one. It will take about fifteen minutes. The teacher would have a computer in front of them, another computer or Chromebook would be in front of the child. And we just, the system would take the child through the process of different areas of reading to see what gaps or what strengths the child sees. At the end of the screener, the, the program will give us a report for the teacher, a report for the parent. And again, and it would highlight for us, this is what we've been told, it would highlight for us, these are, there's nothing to worry about with this child, or you might need to do additional assessments for this child based on how they scored. But it shouldn't take more than fifteen minutes. And I know shouldn't is such a general word because we're talking about fifteen minutes per child in a class of twenty to twenty-four.
And then I just had another question. There's been sort of a lot of things out in the news with regards to age-appropriate items that are shared with younger kids. Is that something that they are very in tune with? Like, we're, we're making sure these things are age-appropriate for the children?
Yes, and, and I would say all three had their research behind it, right? All three had strengths, all three had items that we liked. But of the three, we found that Multitudes was probably the one that might be the easiest to administer, and what that would give us at least some guidance on what children do we need to do a little bit more for. But that the research behind all three has been extensive.
Is this reported to parents, like on the, not the progress reports, but I guess the report cards on the trimester?
No, this will be in addition to what we already provide to parents. It's a specific report coming from Multitudes, based on how the child does. But this is in addition.
Okay. And so then when it, would they go over that at conferences? Would they be able to time it like that? I'm just making sure that the communication is already, is they're thinking about how to set that up for parents?
We're in the early stages, and Multitudes has a guideline as to when would be the best time to give this assessment. For example, they encourage us not to administer the assessment to kinder in the first, I, I want to say like sixty days, because they're just getting adjusted to what a classroom setting is. So they kind of give us a guideline on when would be the best time to administer the assessment. So we still need to come up with a plan as to, okay, so when do we administer? How does this align with other assessments that we already give? What would be the communication to parents? How do we ensure that the parent can then read the report, right? If, if we're going to take the time to administer, we want to make sure that this is meaningful to the families. So we're not there yet. The, we're in the beginning process of, okay, we identified a, a screener. We bring it to you for approval. The next part would be to at least come up with a skeletal plan of, okay, so how, how do we roll it out next year?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that? Can I get a motion to approve two four two point five eight eight?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Coonsy to approve item number two four two five eight eight, seconded by Wesley Cagle. Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Matthew Ward?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Two four two point five eight nine, consideration of approval of a tentative agreement between the district and the G E F A.
Thank you. So yes, we have a tentative agreement with G E F A for salary and related items for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Part of this agreement includes a two and a half percent across the board salary increase, and that would be retro to July one, twenty twenty-four. Also, a health benefit cap increase of a hundred and fifty dollars, which would raise the cap to one thousand fifty per month. And this would take effect for the June payroll if approved. We've also agreed to increase the days of leaves. Currently, teachers receive ten days a year, and this agreement increases it by two for a total of twelve days a year. Also, we have contract language changes for articles related to hours, evaluation procedures, term, association rights and responsibilities, and those changes are provided for you in the backup. This agreement has been approved by, has been ratified by the teachers' union, and the public disclosure has also been approved by our county fiscal team, meaning that our district can afford this compensation that is also provided for you. The fiscal impact is over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars ongoing of a commitment for the benefits and the salary increases. Attached for you is the actual agreement, salary schedules, proposed new contract language, and the public disclosure from the county. Any questions?
I just had a comment. I just wanted to, I, I think it's great that you were able, you know, to have that collaborative process. So I, I want to acknowledge that. And it does seem like a very fair agreement, considering the salary increase with the benefits. So I just, you know, there's different, it's not just the salary, but those other benefits as well. So I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. But I mostly wanted to just acknowledge the district for being, you know, there's a lot of different districts right now that are laying off staff. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that. It seems like we've been fortunate to be judicious with our finances, that we can continue to do this, along with not having to have massive layoffs, like a lot of districts are right now. So that, I just wanted to make that comment. And I think that applies to both this item and the next item. So I won't say it twice. So, but thank you.
And we do have a slide for you that shows what this compensation does to our reserve level. It's actually included in the online packet with a further article or item related to compensation. And we'll share that with you when we get there. But it does, it does drop our reserve down by about two percent. And that's considering compensation for all employee groups if that were approved. C S E A, G E F A, and unrepresented drops it down by about two percent.
Any additional comments, questions? I'm going to make the motion to approve two four two point five eight nine. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two four two five eight nine, seconded by Matthew Ward. Annette Coonsy?
Aye.
Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
And I'll just share with you, since Kawhi put it up now, I won't share it when we get to the other item. But you can see twenty-four, twenty-five, our reserve for current year would be twelve point two-three percent. The following year would be ten point four-eight percent, and then twenty-six, twenty-seven would be nine percent.
Item two four two point five nine zero, consideration of approval of memorandum between the school district and the G E F A regarding full-day kindergarten early release days.
Thank you. We continue to support the voluntary option of offering a full-day kindergarten. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, full-day kindergarten will be offered at Lake Canyon, Morengo Ranch, and River Oaks Elementary. The memorandum of understanding the MOU that is included in this item has information regarding the timeline for indicating interest, notification of a tentative assignment, as well as prep time to be provided. The MOU also includes information regarding the addition of one additional IA per site. And it also reflects seventeen days of early release or early dismissal to allow for planning and collaboration between the full-day kindergarten teachers and the instructional assistant. We are asking for board approval.
Questions, comments? Can I get a motion to approve two four two point five nine zero?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Matthew Ward to approve item number two four two point five nine zero, seconded by Annette Coonsy. Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
And I think I just want to note, I think we have a typo on the fiscal impact. I, I believe that's probably twenty-eight thousand, not two, two thousand. Oh, that's just the thirty-four hours. Okay. There is a little more of a fiscal impact because we are hiring additional IAs. So I just want to make sure the board does understand that, that the, the fiscal impact is more than three thousand dollars.
The, the IAs, and they're currently built in the budget, though. So that way, it doesn't affect our fund balance.
So the one forty-four instructional assistance is going to go up to about one fifty?
Yes, because that's hiring, let's see, how many sites do we have teaching?
Three.
Three. So we will be adding three additional.
One forty-seven.
IAs. Yeah.
Okay. Item two four two point five nine one, consideration of approval of the MOU between this district and G E F A regarding dual-language immersion teachers who are opening a new classroom.
Thank you. We continue to support the expansion of our dual-language immersion program at Valley Oaks. The MOU that is included in this item has information regarding DLI teachers having access to twenty-five hundred dollar fund during the first year of implementation to spend on materials and supplies. The MOU also includes information regarding DLI teachers being excused from adjunct duty during the startup, the startup year, to be able to plan and collaborate to ensure a successful program, and we are asking for board approval.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Coonsy to approve item number two four two point five nine one, seconded by Matthew Ward. Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Item two four two point five nine two, the consideration of approval of approval of the superintendent's recommendation regarding implementing Board Resolution Number Twelve, which was adopted in February, reduction in particular kinds of services and abolishment of classified positions due to lack of work or lack of funds.
Yes. So this is the final board step in the classified reduction process. The final notice of layup will be given to the affected classified employees before May fifteen. In February, we brought seven positions, which included the IAs for kinder. Now we have, we're down to one position. It is the preschool instructional assistant at Fair Sight. Due to no other classification, the employee is not able to bump, but the employee is able to apply for vacancies. So we're hoping the employee will apply to one of our vacancies. That way, she can continue to work as part of the district. And the rest were able to be bumped into a position because we had short-term contracts, and actually, we're able to save that contract for them to begin in the new year. So majority were able to secure a contract for next year.
Questions? Can I get a motion to approve two four two point five nine two?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Matthew Ward to approve item number two four two point five nine two, seconded by Catherine Harper. Annette Coonsy?
Aye.
Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries four zero.
Two four two point five nine three, this district initial public notice with a sunshine for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six to C E S E A.
All right. So this is a public hearing. It will come to the board next month as an action item, is a two-step process. We're, the contract is open, full contract open next year for, with our C S E A classified staff. So we have identified, the district has identified the articles that we would like to negotiate next year. Since the contract is open, we're able to negotiate more than two articles. So we are anticipating to negotiate C S E A rights, vacation, leaves, transportation, disciplinary action, professional growth program, yard supervisors, shoe stipend, sick leave, support system, and parity studies.
Any questions? I'll make the motion to approve two four two point five nine three.
I'll second.
This is a public hearing. We don't have to vote on this. Okay.
Yes, we'll vote next month.
All right. Two four two point five nine four, consideration of approval of nonrepresented agreement covering the period beginning July first, twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, twenty-five.
All right, thank you. So we have forty-three unrepresented staff members, administrators, supervisors, coordinators, counselors, and confidential staff. We are recommending a compensation of two point five ongoing salary increase that would be retroactive to July one, and a monthly health cap increase of a hundred and fifty for a total district cap of one thousand fifty. That would go into effect the June payroll. The fiscal impact is two hundred and two thousand, a little over two hundred and two thousand for salary and health benefits. The attachments for you is the, the reserve level table that we showed you here, that we have that in the online packet. We have updated salary schedules for all of these positions, and the county public disclosure was already provided for you in action item two four two point five eight nine with the G E F A compensation.
Everyone okay on that question?
Yeah, I would like to make one, one comment, that people who are questioning people's salaries and everything, it's in this packet. So it's here. So it's here. The information's here. If you're wondering, people out there, just letting them know.
It's online as well. All of our salary schedules are online.
Question on the dates, because obviously like June 30th is coming up soon. And so we're basically voting on stuff from like 10 months ago up to now. So is it, is it normal for this to be presented to us where we're voting on increases for like the last year?
Yes. It's usually, salary increases are usually retro because you start negotiating in the year you're in. So we started negotiating with our two unions in probably September, October in 2024. And then it takes a few months to come to an agreement. And then the agreements have to be ratified, voted on, approved by the unions, and our county office has to approve it. And then the final step is to come to the board. In some cases, although historically our district has not done this, but some districts and unions do negotiate a multi-year deal. For example, they would negotiate for the current year they're in and also for the 2526 school year. Many districts do that. It's, we have not done that.
Good question, though.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Can I get a motion to approve 242.594?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Cagle to approve item number 242.594, seconded by Matthew Ward. Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Annette Kuntzey?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries 4-0.
Next we have 242.595, the first reading of board policies.
Yes, we have quite a few policies to share a summary with you of some of the changes and have discussion or any feedback. And we will start with business services.
And this is listed as an action item, are we?
No, in your, the hard copy packet, the binder version does say action item. We have corrected that for the online version. This is a first reading.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And if we have comments, do you want them as we go? Or do you want them to, us to wait until the end? What is best?
You know, maybe, maybe as we go, we'll, we'll pause so that way it's fresh, the the policy we're on. So we'll just kind of pause after each one and see if you have any questions or comments.
I will begin with district records, VP and AR 3580. Some information regarding this is cybersecurity. I know recently we have provided an annual training on that. We've also worked with SIA what additional measures we have to do. So policy has been updated to include that. I've worked with men, what's our backups for certain records that we're supposed to keep? So it's practices that we're doing, but now it's more updated in board policy. The next one I have is VP 4151, employee compensation. Some updates in this board policy was when we adopt salary schedules, we make them available and review. Some districts have it in their off, in district office, but we, we have a practice to have it on our website and we continue to update that. So now we're indicating that. We're also indicating how, how often do we pay our employees? It's, they want to see it in board policy. And we've updated that information. Some new changes about overtime came up where districts are not required to double pay anymore. We used to, if an employee worked past the 12 hours, we're, now that became exempt as part of policy. So that was new added to us. And I'm like, we've only had one occasion when we had to do that. But now that has become board policy and a code. Those are some new, small changes.
Questions on those two? Keep moving. All right, curriculum.
Thank you. Policy 1312.2, related to complaints concerning instructional materials. The updated policy indicates that we will encourage parents and guardians to discuss any concerns regarding instructional materials with their student's teacher or the school principal. If the situation remains unresolved, then a complaint may be filed using the process specified in these policies and regulations. It also states that the district shall accept complaints concerning instructional materials only from staff, district residents, or parents or guardians of students enrolled in a district, in our district. The regulation that goes with that same item, these are the steps that are to be followed when filing a complaint. And the exhibit is the actual form that can be used when there is a request regarding a complaint with instructional materials.
Yeah, also I'll make a comment on that. And that is, I actually, I don't have any issue or comment on this particular policy. It's that I would like to express my interest in seeing the district look at considering a policy that would be similar in nature, but on the grounds of addressing controversial books and allowing parents to opt out of allowing their kids to have them either checked out or presented to them. I know Michaela Johnson spoke at it on the last board meeting, so I won't reiterate her words. So I do intend on looking, I have spoken to some teachers to see if there are other, other schools that have similar policies that, in their manuals. And so I'm going to be looking into that to see if there's something that we might be able to bring to the board to consider for the board to adopt in the future.
Thank you. Try and keep track of all the policies that we have here. The next one is policy related to science instruction. This is just updated language that now reflects the opportunity to participate in professional development, the need to develop appropriate safety measures. Keep in mind, we already do this. This is just policy that updates what we should be doing. Not a whole lot here, except that again, it's important to develop those safety measures. And eighth grade at McCaffrey in particular has very strict and has identified what children should follow during like a lab.
I had a question, not on the change, but on the policy. Am I able to ask that now? Or is that, okay. So I, the thing that sort of drew my attention where it talks about philosophical and religious theories that are based on faith are not taught. So to me, I really struggled with that because it sort of required me to step back and think that faith and science are mutually exclusive when for me, they're like so intertwined, kind of along the lines, but for God, there would be no science. But I know that that's my personal belief and not everyone shares that belief and that's certainly within their right. But I also know that there is a lot of students in our community that would have that in a lot of our constituents and even probably our staff. So my question is, and I don't know this, if this would ever come up, but if a student were to say, you know, I, my parents talk to me and, or, you know, I believe that God has created the universe, they wouldn't be told that that is wrong, right? Would they be referred back to their parent? Or how would that be handled?
Absolutely. And I think anytime that a question comes up from children, and our staff are very aware that there are conversations to be had at home and conversations that, you know, we should have at school based on the standards that we follow. So if a question were, or comment was made, I would think that all of our teachers would say, you know, thank you for sharing. If you have any additional information, questions, that's something that maybe you need to check in at home and, you know, get guidance from there. Teachers, whenever there's a lesson, right? That could maybe touch on items that could question or could trigger questions from children. They do a really good job, Annette, of trying to stick their best, trying to stick to the standards to the best of their ability. Our job, I think, at the school side is not to promote one thing or another, but to provide information to children and to encourage children to build their own questions and curiosity. And again, if appropriate, then of course we will encourage it in the classroom. But when it's a conversation to be had at home, then that's, that's for home. And the last policy, similar to science with history, social science, nothing really here new, except again, that we will provide professional development, that there's additional guidance for guest speakers. At McCaffrey, we tend to see this a little bit more when it comes to social studies. So it's just additional guidance on how the guest speaker should have some knowledge related to what we're teaching in the classroom, basically.
All right, thank you. It's my turn, right? Okay, so the policy, the first policy is around drug and alcohol and drug. This is a board policy and administrative update. The language has been updated to account for new laws. And the first being that the districts are to annually inform parents at the beginning of the first semester or quarter on dangers associated with synthetic drugs, not prescribed by a doctor. There's also a new law around districts required to inform parents of the social media marketing to sell these synthetic drugs. There is updated language around prohibiting districts, administrators, sites to suspend or discipline students who voluntarily disclose their use of tobacco, alcohol, or other controlled substances. This board policy and administrative regulation is being updated to include language that prohibits, prohibits districts from prohibiting students at middle school or high school from carrying fentanyl strips or federally approved opiate antagonists. And additionally, students 12 years or younger that may need the nasal spray. It also authorizes a district that may use alternatives to a referral for a student to a law enforcement agency in response to an incident involving the student's misuse of an opiate to the extent that it does not conflict with any law that could be requiring that referral. In addition, the regulation has been updated to include the instruction on the effects of long and short term health risks of alcohol or drug use. Questions? Okay, so the next board policy is around individual education programs. And this is a technical revision. The change, the most significant change is changing the terminology of students with disabilities to students with exceptional needs. In the regulations, the changes that have been incorporated are the requirement that post-secondary, post-secondary goals for students that start high school can be held no later, must be held no later than the first IEP to be in effect before the child is turning 16 years of age. And really, the idea is to start having those conversations as the kids are in middle school, transition to high school, and then beyond, and really involving these students in terms of kind of what are their post-secondary goals? And how do we put systems in place and make sure their IEPs are developed so they can meet those? Additionally, there's new language, new regulations that in an IEP for a student who is considered deaf or hard of hearing, or deaf or blind, when they're considering placement options, that they are considering the language, the primary language of that child. Additionally, there's language in this regulation around assistive technology and the uses of AI, which I figured would be coming since we're talking a lot about AI. So those board policy and administrative regulations have been updated for that new law. And then the last board policy and administrative regulation is around non-public, non-secretarian school and agencies for special education. So these are utilized, we utilize non-public schools when we have students that have an intensive need that our comprehensive campuses can't support. And so this policy and administrative regulations has been updated to include language that if a foster child moves into a district that's currently placed in an NPA, or in, I'm sorry, an MPS of school, that they can stay in that school that they were originally placed from. And that aligns with language and laws that support and provide protections for fostering if to be able to stay in their schools of origin. So it just kind of has been reflected in the non-public school master plans. Additionally, if there's any change in the status of an NPA or an MPS that we are required to notify parents, like if they've lost their certification in a timely manner. Thank you.
All right. All right, my turn. So I will start with access to district records. This is a simple edit here for this board policy. They moved the language related to copying public records to the administrative regulations. And so with the AR for access to district records, they clarified and they provided a list of records that are defined as public or confidential. But it is noted that this is a non-exhaustive list of records. There could be other records out there that are not identified in this AR. It also prohibits sharing personal or confidential information for employees. And it also updates to clarify that unless otherwise authorized or required by law, information regarding individual citizenship or immigration status shall not be disclosed. And we do not collect that, that information for students. Uniform public construction cost accounting procedures. This is the bidding process that we have to follow by law because we're a public entity. Now, after, after you go out to bid for the first time, whether it's informal or formal bidding, if the district rejects the bids, the district can then perform the work more economically by employees of the district. The AR also made a change. They are now clarifying installations of equipment. For example, that is now declared a public project, meaning you will have to go through the regular bidding process for those, that kind of work. Contracts. The policy states that the board ensures that contracts entered into on behalf of the district conform with all legal standards. There's also a new law that requires if the district utilizes a private labor compliance entity, that entity must sign a declaration verifying that it does not have a conflict of interest. And the policy defines what a private, private labor compliance entity is and what a conflict of interest would be. Emergency schedules now allow for a school to, or the board to close school for a health condition or a snowstorm. It also adds language. It also addresses the fact that by July 1 of 2026, you would not be able to apply for funding if you closed a school, if, or if you closed school for a day or weeks, whatever the event might be, unless you have an instructional continuity plan that's included in the district's comprehensive safety plan. And we are currently working on that. We will have to add that continuity plan to our safety plans here by July. Employee security authorizes a collective bargaining representative to seek a temporary restraining order on behalf of a district employee who's been subject to harassment, unlawful violence, or credible threat of violence in the workplace. There's multiple policies because of the, the different employee groups that we have. The AR also requires districts to provide reasonable accommodations to an employee who is a victim or whose family member is a victim of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, or other qualifying acts of violence. And also updates the policy related to an employer requesting to carry pepper spray. Student records, there's guidance on when you can or when you cannot request a warrant, or apply with a request for deletion of student records. It also updated the California Attorney General related to responding to an immigration enforcement in K-12 schools. And we also have to develop protocols to comply with the court's restraining order that may prohibit a party from accessing specified student records. And we also have to ensure confidentiality of student records with any kind of loss, especially related to AI now. Again, similar, the AR also references the Attorney General related to responding to immigration enforcement. It updates the definitions of, for student records of what is clear, what is personally identifiable information, gives updated definitions for that. Conduct. This, what they did here with conduct is they are adding policy that is limiting student smartphone use and requiring that a district update a policy. student smartphone use and requiring that a district update a policy that either limits or prohibits cell, smartphone use every four years to update the policy. Our current policy for cellphone use is in our current board policy under conduct. If the board chooses to adopt this new policy for conduct, our cellphone policy would be moved to number sixteen, which is a new policy that we do not have for mobile communication devices. So, and this, this one states here that by July one twenty twenty six, you would have to develop and adopt every five years, sorry, it was five years, not four, a policy that limits or prohibits student cellphone use, and so we're recommending option two, which would require that students are not using their cellphones during the school day. Currently, that is our policy, and they are supposed to be put away and in their backpack. So we're, we would recommend that, that option. Any questions on that? Seventeen?
Yeah, I do have one comment, so I'll just say that I did read through the policies, especially forty-one fifty-eight on employee security, and I took special notice of the new provisions on use of pepper spray, and it's saying, employees shall not carry or possess pepper spray, and then talks about how you can request authorization from the superintendent, and that there's a process, and you have to say, okay, this is why I want it, and here's the dates for which I feel like I want it, and so I'll just say like on a personal level, I feel, I'm more in favor of more like liberal of like, if a teacher wants to have pepper spray with them, because they think that makes them feel a little bit safer at school, like, I personally don't think they should have to say, well, I'd like it from this date to this date, um, so like, I don't know if there's any latitude, I don't know if that's coming from C S B A, or that's in the, that's in the ed code where like it has to be as such, but personally, I'm in favor if a teacher wants to have pepper spray on them, because it makes them feel safer being at school, I don't think they should have to say, well, I want it on, because of these reasons for this particular time period, because I, for whatever reason, just, I generally feel safer with it, that's just my feeling.
Well, we could look into that to see if it's part of ed code, or any law that states they have to give us the reason or the timeframe of, of how long they would be carrying the pepper spray. I do personally, and everybody knows in the district office, I keep pepper spray in the, um, in the lobby, ever since we had that one incident, Wes was there, um, our, our visitor, but I have personally put pepper spray in the drawer in the front lobby, and it's labeled pepper spray, and everybody knows in the office, if they need to use it, it is there, and I grab it and take it with me on my walks. So, but no, so we will, we will look at that to see if we have some flexibility in reducing some of that language.
Be interested to know how many teacher, I bet you a bunch of teachers carried it anyway.
I'll just say, I have it on me when I met Lake Canyon Bolton, it's in my bag, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm sure we probably have a lot of staff members that have it on their, their key ring, or in their purse, or their backpack, or whatever it might be. Yeah.
My biggest fear is I'll forget to take it out of my purse when I get to the airport. Like I.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, all right, very slight change with bylaw oath or affirmation, affirmation, just adds now that not only, um, governing board members, but anybody exercising any function of a board member shall take the oath. And then nineteen, oh, did I skip one? Legal protection. They added, this is another bylaw, um, they added protection against personal liability for board members. Um, basically, no board member shall be liable for any harm caused by the board member's negligent act or omission when acting within the scope of the board member's responsibility, um, including but not limited to the board responsibilities as specified, um, in the bylaw nine thousand, the role of a board, and so, um, there's protect, protection there for personal liability when you are acting in, in your role as a board. And then the last one, um, we wanted to see if this language will suffice, this was brought to you last month, visitors and outsiders, and there was a comment or concern about the presence of sex offenders on campus, and we do not, we are not required to approve presence of a sex offender on a camp, on campus, but in case if we were, if we did, it was commented that we, to recommended to put some language in there, that they would not be allowed by themselves on campus, and so we put the sentence here, unless, unless otherwise directed by the principal or designee, I should say designee, I think, uh, staff member shall accompany visitors while they are on the school grounds, and this is copied from the A R. So if that, does that suffice? Or for? Okay. All right.
Great. Okay, so do we have any public comments for topics not on the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay, and then pending agenda items, I see we have a few there, um, do we have, is there any updates on those, or do we have any additional things that we want to see on the agenda?
We plan on bringing the dual-language immersion program update to the May board meeting, I was hoping to bring the ag program to the May meeting as well, but I know they are going to be at fair that week, so I don't, it won't be possible to come to the board meeting and fair, so.
Yeah.
County fair, so.
That's a big, big time.
Yeah, we'll probably have to hold that one off until the fall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when school's back in session.
Okay.
And I just had a comment, um, one, I was able to do two classes at Lake Canyon on financial literacy, and it was, the students were really engaged, and had a lot of discussion over needs and wants, especially when I held up a picture of a cellphone, that was very interesting discussion, but they did really good and talked about budgets and things like that, um, and then also, I attended the canoe mobile and had the pleasure of sitting next to Mr. Beckett, who knows everything about birds, and so I learned so much, so he was really awesome, and that whole, I was so glad I was able to do that and spend some time out there. And then, um, I just wanted to mention that as part of the delegate assembly that I was elected to, um, May, in May, I'll be attending a two-day conference in Zachar Minow, and then also, I'm on the, um, it's like a pillar subcommittee regarding strengthening local governance, so I've already got a homework assignment, and I'm going to be working with, uh, the board president and superintendent on getting some feedback with regards to some of the items regarding board culture, so.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, I'll adjourn.